Welcome to the August 18th Board of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. We will now have our call to order and roll call, please. Okay. Oh, just in time. Welcome, sir. All right, now, we will have invocation and our pledge from Commissioner White, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do you want to read the presentation? Okay. All right, do we have a move for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception of moving number 16 under consent to items of discussion.
Items for discussion. That's number 16. All right, you have a motion and a second, please vote. All right, motion passes. Now move on to public addresses to the board.
Mr. Chairman, we have three people signed up for public addresses to the board that indicated their subject matter is the solar farm. I'm believing that that would be better placed under the public hearing for the solar farm. With your permission, we can slide those there and then you have no further public addresses at this time.
All right, we'll now move on to the presentation.
No.
All right.
If Sergeant Bathsheba Smith would come forward.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and those in the audience and watching by other means, it is my absolute honor, privilege, and pleasure to give this month's Employee of the Month award to Ms. Sergeant Bathsheba Smith with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office. Her nominator says that she has been a loyal and dedicated member of the Sheriff's Office since 2002, serving primarily in training and standards. She plays a vital role in the hiring process, in-service training, and maintaining accurate records for nearly 300 certified officers. Since the start of COVID-19 pandemic and during ongoing staffing shortages, Sergeant Smith has been involved in processing over 600 applications, including deputies, detention officers, clerks, interns, volunteers, and medical staff. Her attention to detail and commitment to excellence ensure everything she handles meets the highest standards. She is consistently recognized at the state level for her record-keeping expertise and has successfully passed every annual audit without issue. Always dependable, approachable, and eager to help, Sergeant Smith supports every employee with professionalism and a smile. Her nominator states she truly goes above and beyond daily as an irreplaceable part of our team. With that, Mr. Chairman, we are pleased to have you present a certificate of recognition for Employee of the Month, August 2025, presented to Bathsheba Smith, Sheriff's Office, in recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve. If you will present that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And you will also receive a $100 deposit direct deposited into your account as a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Moving on to the public hearings, Mr. Jonas Hill.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and manager. Tonight, the first item on your agenda is the Tripp Holdings LLC rezoning request. This request is to rezone 3.85 acres of their property located on the southern side of US 264 East, east of its intersection with old Pactolas Road, from rural residential to general commercial. If you look at the map on your screen, you can see that this site is located halfway between the city of Greenville and Pactolas. The existing land use plan shows an area of agriculture or undeveloped area, as well as some residential dispersed throughout this area. There's also, to the northwest, a mining operation there along the intersection of Ram's Horn Road. The future land use map shows this area, designates this area as commercial crossroads. And you can see, let me go back to the previous map, there is a commercial parcel that this rezoning request surrounds, which is an existing dentist office. Again, the envisioned Pitt County 2045 land use plan does designate this area as a commercial crossroads, shown there in the pink shaded area. Commercial crossroads are located around established crossroads communities. These areas have histories of commercial development that serves a larger surrounding area. Appropriate uses include a mix of residential, public, institutional, and commercial uses. Non-residential uses can be located near the residential uses with the appropriate buffers. Some examples of crossroad communities throughout the county are Bell Arthur, Bellevore, Blackjack, Eastern Pine, Stokes, and so forth. A mix of single-family detached homes and public institutional and commercial uses can be found in this area, and some water access is available, but mostly these properties rely on septic systems for waste disposal. Looking at the zoning map, again, there is an existing commercial business that this rezoning request surrounds, as well as there are some commercials zoned at the intersection of Ram's Horn Road and 264. That was done as our zoning maps were adopted originally, nothing has developed on that property currently. The proposed rezoning is for general commercial. It's intended to accommodate a range of retail service, office, and limited wholesale and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares, in this case, 264, and the necessary utilities to support the development. Planning staff finds that this request is consistent with the vision Pitt County 2045 land use plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as a commercial crossroads and allows a mix of single-family detached home, public institution, and commercial uses. Furthermore, the area is proposed that it has direct access along 264 East, and it's located directly adjacent to the dentist office. Additionally, there are two existing active sand mines and a private event wedding facility in the vicinity of this property. Therefore, staff finds it reasonable and in the public's interest because the existing general commercial zone property is adjacent and there's limited residential uses in the immediate area. Planning Board reviewed this rezoning request at its July 16th meeting and unanimously voted to recommend approval, and advises that it is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable. The motions are included in your packet, and at this time, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, for the public hearing.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Mr. Attorney, you'll read the statement.
We have someone signed up?
Yep.
With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the Tripp Holdings LLC rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization that you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
We have one person, Mr. Chairman, signed up to speak for this public hearing, Chris West.
Good afternoon, guys. I'm Chris West, custom building company. I'm just here to represent Tripp Holdings, answer any questions you might have, it's pretty simple. It's a dental office addition, parking lot addition, it's all we're looking for.
No one else has signed up to speak.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Any questions from the board? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, if it is closed.
It's closed.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consistency statement as recommended by staff and additionally approve the request by Tripp Holdings.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes. To number two, Mr. Hill, you'll back up.
All right, the next rezoning request is from HSP Investments LLC. The request is to rezone 33.4 acres of their property and property owned by Stephen and Jana Horvath, located off of State Road 1562, Alvin Road, north of its intersection with NC 33 East, from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district in order to operate a sand mine. Looking at your map showing you the vicinity, it's located between the Village of Simpson and the town of Grimesland, just north of NC 33 West and south of the river. Zooming in a little bit, looking at the existing land use plan, you can see Alvin Road to the south of the site, southwest of the site, and there is a good bit of residential dwellings in this area. Also, you'll see in the gray shaded area, there are two sand mines in close proximity to this request as well. The Vision Pitt County 2045 Future Land Use Plan designates this area as open space or This applies to lands deemed inappropriate for development types due to physical or environmental barriers, including high flood risk. It includes properties within the 100-year floodplain, significant wetland areas, parks, and lands that have been designated for conservation or open space. Primary uses include timber and agricultural activities and recreation. It may include some limited development, not in conflict with the residential uses or significant environmental resources. Again, utility access in this area is very limited. Looking at the zoning map, this area is zoned rural agricultural with a little bit of rural residential to the south along NC 33 East. The proposed zoning is for rural agricultural conditional district. It's intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial and agricultural-related uses. The district reflects a diverse nature of land uses predominantly in the rural areas and therefore permits a wide array of land uses. The conditional district portion of this rezoning does allow for the approval of specific use with reasonable conditions associated, and in this case, the proposed use again is a sand mine. Section 8 of our zoning ordinance does have some requirements for sand mine operations. Minimum 100-foot use separation from the edge of any pit to the permitted boundary of the mine. Hours of operation is only involved if there's blasting that occurs, screening, and they must attain a state-issued mining permit. So, looking at the sketch plan that was submitted for this rezoning request, you'll see on the left-hand side is a detailed drawing, on the right-hand side is a more overview of the site itself. So, I will go between each one of those. The rezoning area is outlined in red, detailing where Alvin Road is on your right-hand side of your screen, on the lower portion. And then the excavation area is shown here in the orange or brown shaded area. There is a six-foot berm that the applicant is proposing around the pit itself, and then there is the existing sand mine over to the west of the proposed sand mine. They are proposing a haul road from the new pit that they're requesting approval for tonight that will go through the former sand mine pit shown in the blue area and use that same access road out to Alvin Road. There are repairing buffers associated with this site that they will need to ensure are undisturbed, and there is a floodway area to the north of the pit itself, and they will need to remain outside of that floodway area. Pitt County staff finds this request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, the area requested for rezoning is designated as open space conservation on the future land use map, and that the areas are predominantly agricultural with limited residential land uses. Land Use Policy LU4 in the plan recommends site-specific operational standards such as additional separation requirements from buffering from existing developments. Planning staff finds that this is reasonable and in the public's best interest because there's very limited residential development adjacent to the proposed sand mine, and there are two active sand mines on site as well. Additionally, the mine will be screened and buffered from any residential property, and truck traffic will be routed through the existing mine to avoid disturbing existing residents in the curve at Alvin Road. Planning Board heard this request at its July 16th meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval, citing that it was consistent with the land use plan and was reasonable. Your motions are included in your packet, and this, need to go through the conditions. No zoning compliance permit will be issued until a site plan is prepared and submitted to the planning department. Screening shall be in accordance with the requirements of Section 10H. However, if a berm is determined to be inadequate, alternative screening may be used. Obtain a floodplain development permit, submit a soil erosion plan to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and operation permit is required from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality's Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources Division. A 50-foot buffer is required on all stream features, and obtain a commercial driveway permit from NC DOT to comply with all the requirements for access on the property. Truck traffic associated with mining operations shall be routed through the existing mines and access Alvin Road via parcel number 20260. Signage shall be posted at the driveway in the curve of Alvin Road to prohibit truck traffic for mining purposes. Hours of operation is 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will declare the public hearing open, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the HSP Investment LLC rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Mr. Chairman, we have just one person signed up for this hearing, Ken Malpas.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. My name's Ken Malpas, 1645 East Darlington Boulevard, representing HSP Properties. The owner worked with adjacent properties for about a year to get this easement to go through the buy, so that the exit would be off of the existing sand mine. So, where the access is and everything is the same as it is for Tripp Brothers, and Tripp Brothers will be the one that will be also this expansion. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
We will now declare the public hearing closed. Any questions from the board? Yes, ma'am.
There are two sand mines.
Don't forget to cut yourself off.
There are two sand mines. There seems to be something, you couldn't see it from the row, but what is between the two? There's a little white clearing here. It showed up on your map, and it also shows up on the one in the notebook. What is that?
So, between the two sand mines, there is a residential property back there. You can see it in the gold coloring on your screen. There is a residence there, and that is the residence that Mr. Malpas spoke about getting permission to cross, so they are aware and are willing to give.
Did they show up in your meeting?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no problem.
Commissioner, yes, I'd like to move that we adopt the consistency statement and also that we approve the request by HSP Investments to rezone from rural agricultural to conditional district, rural agricultural with the conditions as outlined in the staff's materials.
You have a motion and a second, please vote. Mr. Jonas, you've done a very good job on the first two. I don't think this next one's going to quite do quite as fast.
All right, just gearing up for this one, right?
We can hope.
All right, so Hexagon Development LLC is your next item on your agenda. There's a request by Hexagon Development LLC to rezone approximately 1,048.94 acres of property. This property is located on the northern side of Henry Hand Road, west of Stokes Town-St. John's Road, both sides of Stokes Town-St. John's Road, north of its intersection with Highway 118, both sides of Highway 118, east of its intersection with Stokes Town-St. John's, and the northern side of Frank Hill Patrick Road, east of its intersection with Cannon Price Road, from rural agricultural to rural agricultural conditional district in order to operate a solar energy facility or a solar farm. This request consists of 15 parcels and eight property owners. Seven of those properties are owned by Glynnan Cannon, two properties owned by Howard Jean Cannon, and then one property each owned by Edna Nelson Anderson, Denise Whitaker Askew, Evans Farm Rental LLC, Deborah Cannon, Emily Nelson Exum, and Mary Jo Q. Jeffers. To orient you a little bit, where this site is located, it's located east of the town of Griffin, and just about midway between Griffin and the county line between Pitt and Craven County. The existing land use plan shows this area is predominantly agricultural or undeveloped. There is a good amount of residential dispersed throughout this community. I do want to point out, just for reference on this map, that where it says the town of Griffin, there is an existing solar farm on that parcel, or those two large parcels, and then the county has approved a solar farm to the parcel just to the east of that pink shaded area in the town of Griffin. However, it's not reflected on this map because that site has not been developed yet, so it is currently not a solar farm. The site is shown here, outlined in yellow for the proposal before you tonight. As you can see, there are two, or really three different site locations. I'll refer to them individually throughout this presentation, but this gives you overview of where that site will be located. I do want to point out, along Henry Hand Road, which is just south of that large site to the north, there is a good amount of residential that adjoins these parcels along Henry Hand Road and Stokes Town-St. John's Road. Also, moving south, you can see Whaley Road has another concentration of residential areas, as well as Cannon Price Road and Boss McGlawhorn Road. The Vision Pitt County 2045 Future Land Use Plan does designate this area as agricultural. That designation includes prime farmlands that are vital to the agricultural production within the county. Activities include agriculture, forestry, and limited low-density residential and commercial uses. These are located near strategic agricultural lands. The utility access for these sites rely on septic system, community water, and private wells, and there is very limited sewer availability. The density is generally less than one dwelling unit per acre. Looking at the zoning map, the zoning district is rural agricultural in this area. There are, there is a commercial use at the intersection of Henry Hand and Stokes Town-St. John's Road, but for the most part, it's primarily agricultural in nature. The rural agricultural district, conditional district, is what is intended tonight. It is intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, agricultural-related industrial uses, which are interspersed throughout the area that are principally characterized rural in nature. This district reflects a diverse nature of land uses with predominantly rural areas and therefore a lot or wide array of land uses. The conditional use, or conditional district, allows for the approval of a specific use with reasonable conditions to ensure the compatibility of the proposed use and the use for the enjoyment of the neighboring properties. The proposed use tonight is for a solar farm. Section 8 of the zoning ordinance outlines some standards for these solar farms, minimum 50-foot setback from property lines, and a minimum 100-foot separation from any resident, and 100-foot, 150 feet separation for the inverters associated with the project. A maximum height of 25 feet for all equipment and structures, and the submittal requirements, what was required, or what is required, is the site plan, a standard drawings of the components, copies of the lease agreements and solar easements, evidence of a utility interconnection, and a decommissioning plan and cost estimate. There are structural requirements, and it must meet all building code requirements. Underground electrical wiring is required, fencing and screening requirements are outlined, and signage with emergency contact information will be required. Abandoned equipment must be removed after one year of inactivity. So, to look at the site plan before you, as I said, there's three main sections of this plan. You can see it highlighted here in red. And zooming into the northern portion of this request, you can see the area that's requested to be rezoned, highlighted in red, and the applicant has done wetlands and delineation and looked at the presence of streams on the site. You can see those highlighted here in green, outlining those wetland areas and stream features throughout the site. The solar panels are shown in yellow that are being proposed, and if you'll notice, these panels are all 300-foot or these, these panels are all 300-foot or greater setback from any residential properties. If you'll remember, the ordinance only calls for 100-foot separation from residential structures. However, they've gone above that standard and, and self-imposed the 300-foot setback from any residential area. The inverters are shown, indicated on the map by the red dots. Moving to the south, the rezoning area is outlined again in red with the wetlands and drainage canal shown in green, and the panels again meeting that 300-foot setback from all residential properties. The inverters for that site is shown by the red dots. And then the third site, kind of situated between the two, is a substation and switchgear and also the best equipment. There's a transmission line that runs just adjacent to that equipment to tie into the power grid. The applicant has also submitted a vegetation plan. They're utilizing the existing vegetation, the natural vegetation that's occurring. However, in some cases, they will have to go in and ensure that 10-foot vegetative buffer is in, is in place. Looking at the site, this map shows just the solar panels that will be installed on the site. So just wanted to point out, the proposed rezoning area is 1,048 acres. However, the area within the actual fence line that will be buffered is only 416 acres, and the solar panel footprints themselves consist of 115 acres within that site. So just wanted to give you that information. Planning staff finds that this request is consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 comprehensive land use plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as agricultural in the future land use plan, or land use map, which allows for limited commercial uses. In addition, there's a significant amount of wooded and wetland areas that provides spatial separation and screening between the site and the adjacent residential uses. Planning staff finds that it's reasonable and in the public's interest because the request for a conditional district and spatial separation and screening are required as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Additionally, there's an existing solar farm in the vicinity of the property, and the proposed site will not generate a significant amount of traffic, noise, or, and will therefore have minimal impacts on the surrounding area. The applicant is also proposing to increase setbacks from residential properties from 50 feet to 300 feet. Planning board reviewed this request at its July 16th meeting and voted six to one to recommend approval and advised that it is consistent with the land use plan and is reasonable. Your motions are in your packet, and I'll go through the conditions associated with this request. No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan in compliance with the ordinance is submitted and approved. A solar erosion and sedimentation control plan is required. To the maximum extent possible, the site shall utilize the existing vegetation. If not, they must install a 10-foot wide buffer yard in compliance with the plan, and the site must comply with all stormwater regulations outlined in the Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance. A 50-foot riparian buffer is required along all stream features that are present on site. They must obtain all the required permits from the Pitt County Inspections Department, and they must have a driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with the requirements for the property. All equipment and structures shall have a minimum of 100-foot separation from all residential property lines, 50 feet from all other property lines except where they're showing the 300-foot setback from adjacent residential properties on the site plan. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you for the public hearing.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing open, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. With this public hearing now open, Pitt County welcomes all comments on the Hexagon Development LLC rezoning request. Please state your name, address, and the name of any organization that you may be representing. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak.
Mr. Chairman, you have 29 people signed up to speak. First one is Angeline Mitchell.
Well, first of all, I wasn't here on the July 16th meeting, so with everything that he has said, it's questionable, but nonetheless, I am for solar energy. And my presentation now brings up questions, and that is, is it okay to ask or to go into it? I mean, that is simply because of where it's located at, and that's in, it's more than one county. So how far is it going to reach into Pitt County? Is it going to open the door for solar energy all over Pitt County? What is this going to be used for? I mean, what is it going to benefit? Because it's in the area that it's located in, and there are residentials. He said that is there. So what is it going to benefit?
The project owners will be coming up, I believe. They might address some of your questions, but during the public hearings, we don't respond. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was one of my concerns.
Next speaker, Robert Rouse.
And again, let's keep all public comments out for a moment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all, how you doing?
All right.
My name's Robert Rouse, 2065 East Henry Hand Road, Aiden, St. John's Community. So many questions, but I know we don't have them, but three minutes. First of all, my family has owned land in the St. John's Community for 124 years, 1901, and I'm totally against this solar farm project. In the meeting in January, Hexagon presented a study done in 2017. That was eight years ago. It's 2025. And most of the, about all of it can be contradicted, or it actually could be defeated, because there's all kinds of studies out there for and against. But they're salesmen, and I know that's what they do. I believe solar and wind energy are insufficient, are insufficient boondoggle. What I mean by that, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. That's one reason that the, when the big beautiful bill hits at the beginning of the year, that's why they're trying to push this thing through, because it'll be over to subsidies, which is taxpayer money, the, the tax revenue that the county get, that's all taxpayer, that's our money. That's why we're, you're involved in it. But actually, being a landowner, I'm right near where one of the solar panel areas are going to be, and what concerns me a lot is that it'll devalue the land. I had someone that spoke earlier in the planning board that mentioned that he didn't want to do anything to, you know, against the neighbors, the neighboring area, but it does because what is, if it devalues my land, then it hurts me. And we had someone in the planning board that cried about the solar panels helping her so she wouldn't have to sell her land. Well, if the solar panels go up there and it devalues my land, wouldn't it hurt me? Wouldn't it hurt my family? So that's, really is not fair. Let's see, I have something else to. Oh yeah, now this, this is a question to the commissioners, but I know you can't answer a question. I don't know if they can answer it. But if this happens, where's the tax money going? There were some panels that were on the other side of the bridge in Grifton, and during January, someone spoke and said, "Well, it would be for parks, or it would be for, you know, to fix the roads." Have you been to Grifton lately? Have you seen Grifton? It's like a tumbleweed would go down the road, that's what you would see.
Thank you, sir.
So what I'm, okay, what I'm saying is, I'm a strict no, and I would hope that you guys would vote that way, because there's a lot of people feel just like I do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Justin Rouse.
How you doing? Thank you, guys. Obviously, that was my dad. Has been in our family a very long time. Something that was said during my grandfather's funeral in January, "St. John's is God's country." He called it God's country. He loved being from St. John's. He wouldn't tell people he was from Aiden, he wouldn't tell people he was from Grifton. He told people he was from St. John's. And I was, I've been around that area my entire life, 41 years. I'm so proud to be building a house on it, on that land this year. That little dot you saw in the middle amongst all of those, my wife and my kids and myself would be living there. So I ask you, like I said, this growing up, going over there, just being able to just roam the land and enjoy the, the fruits of having that land, seeing, even when you're riding by there, just seeing the beautiful farmland. Don't take that away from my family. Please don't do that. And I, I tell you, one thing that, you know, in the presentation, agricultural was brought up a lot. You're going to kill this land if you do this. You will do it. Also, the last thing I'll say, thanks, thanks again, but don't let the almighty dollar for somebody else fog your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Marian Swinker.
Good evening. I'm Marian Swinker, 3874 Dunhagen Road in Greenville, and I represent the Sierra Club. I'm a physician retired. My specialty was occupational and environmental medicine, and I'm speaking in support of the solar facility because demand for electrical energy is skyrocketing, and we need to find sources of safe, clean energy for things like artificial intelligence and plugging in electrical vehicles and recharging lawn tools that run on batteries and not gasoline. Solar energy is very safe. I've reviewed the literature last year, and the current generation of solar panels have eliminated the heavy metals that were of concern. I could go into details, but I don't have time with the three minutes. As far as land use concerns, there have been some interesting developments in a lot of places like California and in Europe. They actually continue to raise livestock and crops even on solar farms. They raise lettuce and peppers and things in the shade under, under the panels, so the two are not antithetical. So having solar facilities doesn't take fertile land out of production necessarily. Also, in the past year, the state of North Carolina passed a law that governs the decommissioning process, and so solar, utility-grade solar facilities have to put up financial guarantees when they build the thing that will pay for removal should, should their business go under, so that the, the county isn't left with cleanup in some form. So based on all those considerations, I, I would be in support of the solar farm. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chad Essick.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Chad Essick. I'm a land use and zoning attorney with the law firm Porter Spruill in Raleigh, here this evening on behalf of Hexagon Energy in connection with this proposed rezoning. The project, if approved, would develop an 80-megawatt energy generating system paired with a 30-megawatt battery storage system. Joining me here tonight are a number of Hexagon representatives who will discuss the details of the project and will summarize the number of reports that have been done, both based on economic analysis of the project, environmental considerations that were evaluated, property impact studies that were done, viewshed analysis, and the overall health and safety of solar farm developments. Also joining us here tonight are a number of the project landowners that will speak in support of the project. Staff has done an excellent job summarizing the rezoning requests and the planning board's recommendation for approval, so I'm just going to provide a very high-level overview and then let the Hexagon folks speak to the specifics. Ally Krantz, the Director of Development, will speak towards the end, and she's probably the best person to ask any specific questions to. Hexagon has been developing energy projects since the 1990s. Over the past 20 years, Hexagon has developed nearly 3,000 megawatts of operating energy projects across 17 different states, representing capital investment of one, of more than $1.5 billion. As noted, the, the project assemblage has a number of families who own this property, and while Hexagon has just under 1,500 acres under option for the project, just over 400 acres will be located within the fence line of this project, and about 115 acres will be comprised of actual solar panels. The remaining acreage will be used to accommodate the significantly increased setbacks that were discussed. Access roads and all environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands and flood hazard areas will be respected. The project does comply with Pitt County's development standards for solar energy facilities related to heights, setbacks, fencing, landscaping, and decommissioning. And of particular note, as has been discussed tonight, Hexagon has doubled and in some cases tripled the setback requirements, ensuring that panels, inverters, and substations are set back at least 300 feet from non-participating homes and public roads. As staff noted, the proposal is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Additionally, I'll note, and I think Ally with Hexagon will talk, we've been in constant communication with the town of Grifton officials. We have entered into an agreement whereby, prior to commencing the project, Hexagon will voluntarily donate $100,000 to the town for the construction of a public park within the town's corporate limits. That agreement was unanimously approved by the town board last Monday night. So with that, I thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, and we'd ask that you support the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ross Suetz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ross Suetz. I'm a project developer with Hexagon Energy. Our address is 321 East Main Street, Suite 500, Charlottesville, Virginia, 22902. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Stokes Town Solar Project. I'd like to share a brief summary of two important studies that evaluate the economic benefits and health and safety impacts of the proposed project. Wanted to start with the economic analysis, prepared for us by Mangum Economics. Over the 30-year life of the project, Stokes Town Solar is expected to generate more than 3.2 million in county tax revenue compared to just $90,000, $90,000 if the land remained in its current agricultural use. That's a 36-fold increase in tax revenue for, for Pitt County. During construction alone, the project would support a total of 77 local job years and generate over 10.8 million in local economic output. Once operational, it will continue to support local jobs and spending each year. Solar projects like Stokes, Stokes Town create steady demand for skilled local labor. In terms of alignment with county goals, in April of this year, Boviet Solar celebrated the grand opening of their new solar panel manufacturing facility. The Hexagon team had the privilege of touring the facility a few weeks ago. It was impressive to see the scale of production and the thousand-plus jobs it will create in the community once manufacturing is at full capacity. Stokes Town Solar complements this investment and ensures that more of the energy value chain remains here in Pitt County. Now turning to health and safety, 85% to 95% of the materials that make up solar panels are glass, plastic, aluminum, and aluminum. According to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, while solar panels contain trace amounts of materials like lead or cadmium, they are safely encapsulated in glass that is coated in a vinyl layer. This vinyl layer prevents glass from shattering and ensures that the panels do not pose a risk of leaching or exposure. The lead that is contained within solar panels is 12 to 15 grams, or about half the amount of lead in a 12-gauge shotgun shell, or 1/750th of the lead in a car battery. Even in extreme situations such as fire or storm damage, scientific testing shows that toxic elements remain contained and do not pose a meaningful risk to neighbors or the environment, which is why you can find- which is why you can find solar panels on homes and schools. After the usable lifetime of the project, the panels will be removed from the land. In June of 2023, North Carolina House Bill 130 was enacted, which requires all solar projects greater than 2 megawatts to be decommissioned at the end of their usable life and the land returned to as close to pre-existing conditions as possible. The EPA has also determined... Thank you so much.
Three minutes goes quick.
Yes, sir. Yes, it does. Thank you so much.
Erica O'Donnell.
Good evening, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is Erica O'Donnell, and I'm a Senior Development Engineer at Hexagon Energy. I'd like to walk you through a few of the key engineering decisions that we made to improve the system design, incorporate community feedback, and increase the environmental compatibility of the Stokes Town Solar Project. First, we moved the project's switchyard and battery storage equipment to a more centrally-located parcel, allowing for greater setbacks from nearby homes. Because of these increased setbacks, the project not only meets Pitt County's noise ordinance, but exceeds it, ensuring no measurable impact to nearby residences. In response to community feedback, we removed panels from higher-density residential areas entirely. We've removed the arrays that immediately boarded both sides of East Hanrahan Road and increased setbacks from the homes on Whaley Road to 500 feet. Additionally, we have increased setbacks across the rest of the site. Our original design included 100-foot setbacks. However, after the community meeting, we made the decision to increase setbacks to a minimum of 300 feet from non-participating homes and public roads across the entire project. We then went a step further and increased setbacks to a minimum of 300 feet from all residential property lines. In many areas, that distance is even greater. We also optimized and consolidated the panel layout. This redesign allowed us to cut the number of parcels requiring rezoning down by more than half, from 32 down to just 15. Fewer rezoned parcels means a more compact project footprint that better aligns with surrounding land uses. As required by the Pitt County zoning ordinance, we've included a landscape screening around the site perimeter. Our plan includes a 10-foot-wide perpetually maintained vegetated buffer between the project and all public roads and property lines, utilizing existing vegetation where possible. Any new vegetation will include at least one canopy tree for each 40 linear feet of road frontage. Each tree will be a minimum of eight feet tall at planting and reach a minimum of 40 feet at maturity. Hexagon partnered with a team of specialized consultants to conduct hyper-local studies evaluating the project's potential impacts on the environment and surrounding community. In a few moments, you'll hear directly from several of these experts about their findings. Based on their research, we designed the project to minimize noise disturbance and avoid sensitive environmental areas in locations with highest flood risks, ensuring that the facility is sited responsibly and resiliently. We've also preserved large areas of contiguous open space within the project boundary to support wildlife movement and maintain ecological connectivity. These open areas, free of panels, will be seeded with native and naturalized vegetation, creating pollinator habitats and promoting biodiversity. In short, this design reflects our careful engineering, community input, and environmental stewardship.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Minia Rekta. Did I have that wrong? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Minia Rekta, and I'm with Tetra Tech, an environmental engineering consulting firm, speaking on behalf of Hexagon. I have a degree in environmental science, and I've been working in this industry for over a decade. I've managed over 50 renewable projects from the early siting due diligence phase through pre-construction and post-construction remediation. As part of Hexagon's due diligence, they contracted our firm to conduct a hydrology and hydraulic study that analyzed the existing conditions and modeled the potential areas of ponding during a 100-year storm. This H&amp;H study is in addition to the FEMA floodplain analyses. These studies are helpful since they can show ponding depth in overland areas, whereas FEMA floodplains only show ponding within designated streams. These analyses are both evaluated to create the most optimal design. The findings of that study showed that the areas with the highest probability of flooding are located in the lower elevations closest to the existing water bodies. Hexagon redesigned the layout to avoid the ponding areas, pulling panels further away from potential hazards and eliminating land disturbance from these lower elevations. The design will stay out of the FEMA floodplains entirely. Any installation of equipment that Hexagon would propose within the FEMA floodplain would require coordination with the local certified floodplain manager to demonstrate that the project would not alter the extent or depth of flooding. Ultimately, the proposed site plan will be reviewed and approved by North Carolina DEQ as part of the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, which the project will need to have in hand before beginning construction. As outlined in the NPDES regulations, no changes to off-site quantity or quality of stormwater would be permissible. This is achieved by designing stormwater BNP's, or Best Management Practice Features, that meet the NCDQ's Stormwater Design Manual standards in reducing and pretreating any sediment water that may be produced during construction. Example BNP's include silt fence with geotextile fabric that holds back sediment from leaving the construction area, or combinations of drainage ditches and detention basins meant to collect water runoff from within the site and allowing the sediment to settle to the bottom while the sediment-free water leaves the site. The BMP features that are appropriate for this project will be developed during the detailed design and submitted to North Carolina DEQ along with the required engineering calculations that demonstrate the project will achieve the conditions of the NPDES permit. Thank you for your consideration, and I welcome any further questions as part of this discussion.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ty Sutton.
3859 Suite 202, Battleground Avenue, Greensboro, North Carolina. My name is Alan Winfield Ty Sutton Jr. I'm a principal with Sutton Shively Real Estate Appraisers out of Greensboro. I've been appraising for over 30 years. I'm a state-certified, a North Carolina state-certified general real estate appraiser. I hold the MAI, SRA, and AIGRS designations, which are the highest commercial, residential, and review designations put out by the Appraisal Institute. The designations require significant additional peer review, education requirements, and national testing. I'm governed by the uniform standards of professional appraisal practice, which require me to be objective, impartial, and independent. I have reviewed the report on the property on Cannon Price Road, St. John's, in Pitt County, which was prepared by Richard Kirkland Jr., MAI, with Kirkland Appraisals LLC. The report utilizes several methodologies. This includes nine impact studies completed by other appraisers, several articles, 12 broker commentaries, eight published university studies, 39 Carolina tax assessor's with solar farms in their communities, in their counties, 189 nationwide tax assessors with 189 responses, 172 said no impact, and 17 were no combat. We have matched pair analysis, also referred as paired sales, with 20 examples in North Carolina, 77 matched pairs in southeastern USA, and 93 examples from 28 states, as well as sale resale analysis. Based on the data and analysis presented in the report, it is my professional opinion that the solar farm proposed at the subject property will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. It is noted that some of the positive implications of a solar farm that have been expressed by people living next to solar farms include protection from future development of residential developments or other more intrusive uses, reduced dues, odor, noise, odor and chemicals from former farming operations, protection from light pollution at night, and it is quiet and there is no traffic. That's what I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bill Yoder.
Good evening. My name is Bill Yoder. I'm a principal with Ascentec. It's an independent acoustical consulting firm. I'm based out of Charlottesville, Virginia. And we were contracted by Hexagon to perform a sound study for this project. A sound study for a project like this typically includes an ambient sound survey, a process where we set noise goals, either internal or external, and we predict project-based sound levels. And then we compare those predictions with our goals. And so, to start, we had the ambient sound survey, which measures existing ambient sound, set up at around the properties that are participating in the project to characterize the current average and background sound levels for daytime and nighttime periods. And from there, we set our sound goals. So, first one is obvious, right? We've got to review your noise ordinance here in the county. And those are set. They're quantitative. You've got sound level limits for various receiving property types. And in this case, the most of the receiving properties are agricultural, which means they fall under the residential umbrella. And those are the strictest sound level limits provided in the county code. That's 55 dB A during the day, 50 dB A at night. And then after that, the next internal goal that was set is the goal to be a good neighbor. And so, here is where we consider the current ambient noise level in the community and make considerations for annoyance due to new sound. And so, after we've identified the existing ambient sound and the sound goals, we move on to predictions. From there, we develop a computer model that includes all of the noise generating equipment on the site, all of the terrain on the site, and potential ground cover. We take it a little step further, and we actually don't include things like trees and other types of vegetative buffers, because we want to keep it conservative. We can't count on those always being there. And the results of that, of this, this, this study is that the predictions show that the strictest county sound level limits are met, which is great. It also shows that the internal be-a-good-neighbor goal has also been met with predicted sound levels at the nearest residences below nighttime background sound levels. And, you know, just to sort of put a pin in this, in plain language, the project is designed to be quiet at the neighbors and compliant at the property boundary. And no special noise controls are expected. And, you know, I'll be here tonight, so if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Dan Gerlock.
Good evening. My name is Dan Gerlock. I run my own consulting company, Dan Gerlock LLC, headquartered at 5616 Alpine Drive, Raleigh, 27609. Mr. Chairman, I apologize to the manager for my poor penmanship of the last few names. The reason for my presence here tonight is I'm on a contract to Hexagon. I have 35 years in budget and economic development. 30 of those years has been spent in North Carolina, 11 of which is president of the Golden Leaf Foundation up the road in Rocky Mount. On the budget side, the budget analysis is a simple one. One, you heard testimony earlier about the gain in property taxes that you would get versus the current use of the project. $90,000 versus $3.2 million. That money can be used for the many purposes that you need it to make the quality of life even better here in Pitt County. But on the spending side, it doesn't put any pressure on your education budget, on your human services budget, on your human services budget, and on your public safety budget, in addition to the traffic talked about earlier. So, it is a net gain for you in terms of pure budget, in addition to the benefit to the town of Grifton discussed earlier. On the economic development side, you heard about the relationship with Boviet, potential relationship with Boviet Solar, how they could find a customer, increase their odds of success here. But on your consent agenda today, you'll hear about a grant, you have a grant before you for the Select Site Program to help develop more industrial sites in Pitt County to help increase economic opportunity for your citizens. The number of projects, and your economic developer can tell you this, is that the demand for electricity, the demand for water, the demand for sewer, for industrial projects that you're competing for has grown severalfold in the last five years alone. The reason why Hexagon is developing this project is because in North Carolina, we need more power. We need more supply on the grid, or we will not compete successfully for industrial development while keeping residential rates affordable. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir.
Ally Krantz.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Holoman. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Ally Krantz. I'm the Lead Developer and Director of Development at Hexagon Energy. I have a great cast of folks here to help me explain the project. So, I'm really here to answer questions when the time comes and to summarize what we're doing here. I think the biggest thing and the biggest takeaway and the thing I'm most proud of is what we've been able to incorporate into the project regarding community feedback that I've received. I held a community meeting in January, and one of the big takeaways is it's close to our homes. We're worried about it. We don't want to see it. And so, we have done everything we possibly can to ensure that we're as good of a neighbor as possible. And I know there are many folks here tonight who don't want to see this and feel that it's a great change to their community. And I respect that, and I acknowledge that. And as a result, we've done what we can to try to minimize those impacts as much as possible. So, you know, 300-foot minimum setback from all residential property boundaries. One thing I'd like to point out is we made a commitment along the, for the homes along East Whalen, or excuse me, along Whalen Road, for 500-foot setbacks, and I would love for that to be a condition of the permit, because that's a commitment we made, and I want to make sure that that is held to it. So, something I can talk to Jonas about. But taking these very seriously, would like these memorialized in the conditions. You know, we feel very comfortable and very confident in the environmental safety of the project as this woman, who I didn't know was gonna be here, but I'm very thankful of, the physician has done the studies, has studied and researched the projects and understands the safety. I mean, there's a solar factory being, producing panels in this county right now. So, I think we all feel pretty confident in the, in the safety of those. And then, of course, there's the economic benefits of the project to the county. And then the other thing that I'm very proud of and very excited about is the partnership we've developed with the town of Grifton. Another thing I heard at the community meeting was there are no parks in the area and a need for, or a desire to get something in return for this project. Obviously, there's a lot of landowners who will benefit from this project, but what will the community get in return? And so, instead of putting that project in the hands of Duke Energy, who will ultimately own the project, and again, this is a lease on the land, but Duke will own the project. Instead of putting a park in their hands, I worked with Dylan Hayman, the town manager of Grifton, to come up with a proposal and an idea for a park that could benefit the local community. They accepted that. It's going to be ADA compliant, and it will help serve the local community and give back in some way. So, I'm more than happy to answer questions, but I appreciate you all considering this, and I ask that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brian P. Colley.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. Appreciate your time. Hard to follow that. That was a lot of big, heavy hitters from nowhere close to here. North Carolina general statutes require zoning regulations be made with a comprehensive plan, for instance, our Pitt County envisioned 2045, and be designed to promote health, safety, and the general welfare of the community. I believe the decisions that affect a large number of households or communities should be done so guided by fairness and responsibility. I would like to address two concerns tonight. First, I'm concerned about the potential environmental effects to construction and the maintenance of this solar project. This expensive will have on our community and our community at large. I'm so sorry. Brian Colley. I live at 2922 Highway 118. I forgot all about that. I'm a retired police chief. I'm a husband of a lovely woman for the last 40 years and a father of two great kids. Back onto this. Portions of this project lie within drainage zones of the Neuse River. I question what effect the leaching of chemicals and the added sediment will have on our waterways. As you may or may not know, the Neuse River and its local tributaries are home to the Neuse River Water Dog and the Carolina Mad Tom, both aquatic species, and both listed as endangered. These two animals only reside here in our local tributaries, and they are found nowhere else in the world. The second concern that I'd like to address is that a group of professors at Virginia Tech researched the financial impact solar projects have on the community in which they are built. The results of that research found that agricultural or vacant land... The results of that research found that agricultural or vacant land increased in value an average of 20%. Residential properties, on the other hand, lost an average of 5% of their resale value. Those of us who may be interested in purchasing available land for our own personal use, maybe getting into farming, will have to pay more due to the manufactured inflation of available land pricing, which should we want to sell our homes? We risk getting less than fair market value due to the proximity of this solar project. I agree that, as one Commissioner so eloquently pointed out to me in a brief email exchange, that landowners should be able to produce an income on their property. But I ask you, to what extent do the rights of a few people who own tens or hundreds of acres supersede the rights of hundreds of people who own their homes on small parcels of land to make money on what they have? As an elected official, you are charged with building stronger communities based on, among other things, the desires and concerns of those who elected you to office. I hope that you will ask yourself, does the rezoning of this landmass to construct a proposed solar project promote to the health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of our community? Thank you for your time. I appreciate you.
Gary and Wendy Evans.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, Vice Chair. My name is Gary Evans, 509 Abbott Farm Road in Aiden, North Carolina.
I'm Wendy Evans, his wife.
And we represent Evans Farm and Rental. Just to give you a little history, this tract of land was inherited by my, my wife's grandfather. It's been in the family for nine, eighty, 89 years. We did not take this decision very lightly to enter into a lease agreement with Hexagon. However, we realize, we're from agricultural backgrounds, that it's, it's almost impossible now to pay the taxes and the drainage fees that we're paying as landowners. There's not as much revenue as it used to be when we had tobacco quotas. Tobacco quotas, we were the largest tobacco quota in the state of North Carolina, and today, our income bases have changed. But our biggest concern is, is we want to be able to pass this property to our future generations, as well as all of our fam, family land. We don't want to sell it to a developer. We don't want to mine it. We don't want a commercial agriculture. We just don't want it. And, but this option checks the box for us as landowners, that it gives us sustainability. It, it gives us an option to continue to own this property. We only leasing it out, and it gives us the most important that we value so much, is that we can pass it to our kids and our grandkids. And we have properties, family properties, not just here, but throughout other townships. And that's very important to us. And, and that is the reason that we, we did a lot of soul searching, but this is a tremendous opportunity for us. And we are concerned about our neighbors, and we expect the same back for us. But with the setbacks and the drainage districts that's created, and we, you know, a lot of this stuff is out of our hands. I mean, it's not us making that decision. You know, we don't decide whether it's a 50-foot setback, or a 100-foot, or a football field. You know, that, that's not our decision as landowners. So we would really appreciate your consideration. We know it's a hard decision. But, but again, it's a viable situation, sustainable, for our family and, and our LLC to move forward. So again, thank y'all for, for listening to us tonight. I really appreciate the consideration. And again, any comments?
I would just like to say that, you know, just to reiterate what my husband has said, I support that. My grandfather bought this property back in the depression age, and I can remember, I can remember him telling stories about how he sponsored to pay it off. And we would like to be able to pass that on to our kids and our grandkids.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Glendy Cannon.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Glendy Cannon, and I live at 7269 Stokes Town St. John's Road. I am for the solar. I had no idea I would lose my husband in 2019. I had no idea I'd lose my son in 2021. I do own most of the, the parcels, but my husband and I, we wore blood, sweat, and tears to pay off all this land, and I was blessed to have it all paid off at his death. And obviously, they think I'm married to Donald Trump now, the taxes do, because that's how much they went up. And so my opinion, at the end of the day, is to pass this on to my generation, to my And everybody in the neighborhood is just mad at me, because I live, I still live there. I have been real good and honest about not having this near the church. I'm not having it nowhere near St. John's Church. My property will never have those panels on there. Some of the places that I've chosen not to have the panels is on account of the people and the respect that I have for the neighborhood. And I've been here all, I've been there all my life. I've been, I was raised there. I was born there. So at the end of the day, I just would wish that y'all would just understand that this is good for the revenue and everyone involved that can help out. You don't know how much this could help out, the, the town of Grifton and the surrounding areas. And anybody that owns an acre of land or owns two acres, if you don't like it, put it for sale, sign up, and move. That's what I've been told to do by people that I thought all these years were my friends, and now I am an enemy to them. And that has hurt me more than anything in this world. And I really wish you'd consider it, because at this time, I'm at my home by myself. I've had to add security, because I'm so scared of the people that don't like me anymore. And it has gotten to the point that it's very, very ridiculous.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Scott Marquage? Marquage?
Good evening. My name is Scott Moretti, 7176 Stokes Town, St. John's Road, Aiden. I didn't have my glasses. I couldn't have read it either. Don't hold it against me. I live right on one of the main parcels that this is, they're looking to do. I've raised three children there, and I'm raising my grandbaby there now. We've all enjoyed it over the years. I've actually helped farm this land. I know the land very well. I'm still working on the land in a different aspect, so I'm there every day and it's still paying me. But the thing about it is, if you take a look, and just pull it up on your phone, the United States leads in one crop, corn. Everything else is overseas. We building some houses, though. Well, we, we flat putting some houses in Pitt County especially. Not everybody wants neighbors. I'm not interested in a street full of neighbors to hear them shooting all times at night and everything else. Because now, if you put somebody in the country, ain't nobody behind them, most time, they're going to shoot something. We hear it all night long. Neighbors don't always get along, as you can tell. And a lot of what y'all deciding tonight is what one neighbor says the other neighbor ought not to do with what belongs to them. I don't know about y'all, but I don't like to sit back and have somebody tell me what I can and can't do with what I've bought and paid for, whether it be land or my car or whatever. Neighbors don't control neighbors. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Jefferson.
I'm Steve Jefferson, 1612 Oberlin Road, Raleigh, North Carolina 27608. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My late wife, Mary Jo Quinally, grew up on Stokes Town Road on the Quinally Farm, which they've, has been in their family for almost 200 years. And she loved, loved her community. She loved her neighbors. Her dad and her grandfather operated a country store right across from their farm. Some of you may remember that. When, before she died, the, the land that we're discussing tonight was put in a trust for her children, her heirs, and I'm a trustee of that, and that's why I'm here. She also gave the land to the Grifton Fire Company in the, in the middle of the farm, actually, it's about where her, where she grew, excuse me, where she grew up. She loved her community, and I think that she, her dream, and we don't have the benefit of her knowledge tonight, but her dream would have been to see that this land could be passed, somehow could be passed along to her heirs, and I see this as an opportunity to do that. And I urge you to pass the, pass the amendment and whatever it is before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Denise Askew.
Hello, I'm Denise Askew, and I am in full support of this project. I am a proud member of a three-generation family of Pitt County farmers. I grew up in Aiden. Both my parents grew up in Aiden. Even into my adulthood, I still had three grandparents living in Aiden. So my roots are deep in Pitt County as well as in farming. My farm on Hanrahan Road passed to both me and my mother 30 years ago when my daddy died. And my mother passed away just a few months ago at the age of 93. And she was in excellent health, still driving, going out with friends. And so last year, when Hexagon reached out to us about this property, she was on full board. She signed on that dotted line. She was so excited about this project, she understood it completely, and that means the world to me. And so it's not just me standing here looking at you, it is my 93-year-old mother as well. Bless her soul. My husband managed this farm for us for most of those 30 years, and he also came by farming naturally as well. He was born on a farm, his family still farms, and he even became the farm manager for BB&amp;T Bank's Trust Division. So he managed all the farms that were in trust with BB&amp;T Bank. So my husband knew farming. I lost him three and a half years ago to cancer, but he had a dream for this Hanrahan farm. And he didn't just talk about it or dream about it, he pursued it. He wanted solar energy on this farm. And when he pursued it, unfortunately, the companies were not in our area at that time, so it didn't happen. But he never gave up on that dream, so that dream is now mine as well. So last year, when Hexagon calls me out of the blue, I felt like my husband was literally whispering in my ear, tapping me on the shoulder, saying, yes, this is what we dreamed of, this is what we have wanted, it's good for Pitt County, it's good for the economy, it's good for the environment, and it's good for our farm. So I thank you very much. I hope you will support this. My address is 203 Chawan Drive in Chalkawinnity. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Owen Lupton.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for your time. Allow me a couple of minutes to speak. My name is Owen Lupton, and I am property at 2148 Cannon Price Road. I am not originally from Grifton, but I've previously served the citizens of Grifton in years past. I rode with Grifton EMS for several years and was the captain. Folks talked about the flooding. I was actually there when we were searching for bodies in 1999 during the flooding. So I, I do own some of what happens in this area also. My wife Teresa is an Aiden-Grifton High School graduate and was born and raised on Marvin Taylor Road. I'm not going to argue that this is a very tough subject for the property owners that are getting these leases, but it does impact more than just those individuals. It impacts an entire community. I've been fortunate, I oversee operations for a very large company, about a billion-dollar business unit, and part of my job actually involves environmental health and safety. So obviously, I spend a lot of time assessing data and looking at things. Data is always subjective. You can pull data from five different sources, and you can give five different answers. That's just how data works. I would not expect Hexagon to use anyone that's not going to come up here and give positive data. That is what they're selling at this stage, and I completely understand that. The argument, the argument is that you can find just as many studies that actually show opposition to this data. Negative impacts on wildlife, heavy metals in the soil, increased heat, decreased property values, and the list goes on. So let me approach this from a little different perspective. On August 10th, 2018, our youngest son, who was two at the time, was diagnosed with B-cell acute lymphoblastic leukemia, a type of blood cancer. He underwent over two and a half years of extensive chemotherapy that destroyed his immune system to build it back up. Seven years later, he still has to go see a pediatric oncologist and has to be checked for his blood works. 20 years from now, he will still be a cancer survivor who always runs the risk of a compromised immune system. My honest question to all of you on the board is this: If you had a child or grandchild that had or was fighting an immune suppression-type disease, and if only 1% of those negative comments were correct, would you build a house right in the middle of this proposed solar farm and subject your loved ones to the possibility of a negative, negative impact? Even if it's only a 1% chance that those are correct and those negative impacts, if you answer no, I don't believe in good conscience, you can vote to move this forward. At some point, life is way more valuable than tax dollars. I thank you all for your time this evening, and I hope you will consider the impacts of this project on our community. The last thing I would like to say is, there was a comment about not taking our tax dollars away from education. My kids go to a rural school.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have any education funds.
Teresa Lupton.
Teresa Lupton, 2148 Cannon Price Road, Grifton. I am here as a concerned community member of Grifton in opposition of Hexagon Energy's proposed solar field. If approved, this will be the fourth solar field, the fourth, in Grifton. This takes up a huge portion of an already declining town, which is trying its best to find its way to grow and flourish. Some of my concerns are the unknown effect of, on our health and especially the health of our children. I have read about issues like headaches, vision problems. There are serious speculations on whether the exposure to these in 30 or 40 years is causing cancer. Again, like my husband said, I have a nine-year-old son that was diagnosed with B-cell ALL at the age of two. He is four years past chemo, but he will not be considered cured until October of this year, when he reaches the five-year mark. This is something that I take very seriously and one of the main reasons that we decided to move out into the rural Grifton area. I wanted to provide my family with a better and safer life. Hexagon Energy says that the radiation is no more than a microwave puts off. The difference is that my- my microwave does not run constantly. And they, thankfully, don't have a child that has already been exposed to an overload of radiation. Ally with the Hexagon stated that they could not give us anything in writing to guarantee that there will be no health side effects from this solar project. So tell me, who is going to vote to approve to put my children in constant contact with radiation? The possibility of toxic materials from damaged panels leaching into the soil and water, Hexagon stated that they have tested panels which are made with tempered glass and that when they're damaged, they don't leak enough of anything. Lead was particularly listed to be harmful to humans. The fact is that they can leak. And what about the animals? Is it enough to be harmful to the deer, the bobcat, the squirrels, or the frog? All of these are very important to our ecosystem. Will yearly soil and water testing be completed by a non-affiliated company and results shared with the locals? I am also presenting a petition against this solar project with 276 signatures. The vast majority of this community does not want this or any other solar project. We do not feel confident about this project, and we believe it will come with many negative effects. Our town and many other economically disadvantaged areas in our state are struggling with this issue. We pay our taxes, we thrive in our communities, we value our homes and our land, and we raise our families with the hope that we have something of value to leave for them once we're gone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sheila Parker.
My name is Sheila Parker. I live at 2226 Frank Kilpatrick Road in Griffin. Thank y'all. I am here to ask you to please vote no to Hexagon Energy's Stokes Town Solar Installation. This capital project is not just problematic for the Pitt County residents who have to live by it. Everyone in Pitt County needs to be concerned about this lengthy, economically risky, because the tax money doesn't always work out, proposition. This industrial utility project has the potential to cause disaster for the entire county through an increased risk of flood events. Perhaps this utility project does not seem to comply with the Noose River Hazard Mitigation Plan update, which was approved by y'all on August 4th. Rezoning 1,000 acres of farmland for Hexagon Energy Stokes Town Solar, the Noose River Hazard mitigation update is required for Pitt County to be eligible for FEMA funds. Page 301, "The mitigation capability of the Griffin area is limited." This fact is clearly demonstrated numerous times throughout this document, maps, charts, assessing vulnerabilities of our county. The Upper Swift Creek and Flat Swamp Watershed Study, available on Pitt County's website, also shows the importance of the Griffin area in regards to Pitt County's stormwater runoff and the area's vulnerability in the event of a flood. Priority 5, page 474 of the Hazard Mitigation Update reads, "All capital projects should be sited outside of a floodplain area." These farms, it's semantics, whether it's in a floodplain or not, it's either right beside it, in between. Griffin is low, lowest part of the county. The vast majority of our stormwater goes to Griffin and about half our sewage. Another very clear example of this project not being in compliance with the Noose River Hazard Mitigation Update regards Priority 12. Priority 12 states there must be access to critical facilities during flood events. Critical facilities are not in place to handle an emergency at the 30-megawatt battery storage substation proposed to be built on Frank Kilpatrick Road. This location is in Garner'sville Fire District, a rural volunteer fire department. In the case of an emergency with these lithium ion batteries, will Garner'sville Fire Department be prepared for that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Jeff Monaco.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Monaco. I'm Chair of the Cypress Group of the Sierra Club. The Cypress Group is Sierra Club's representative in the 19 counties in northeastern North Carolina. We represent over 1,000 members and supporters in eastern North Carolina. I live in Grimesland on Lockhaven Lane in Pitt County, and I'm a retired professional engineer. I am in favor of rezoning to allow a solar farm east of Griffin. I want to say I'm all for farms, I like to eat. However, the way a lot of farming is done today, I would rather have solar farms as my neighbors than an industrialized farm. We don't often consider what farming has become today. Farming has changed. Now, 90% of farming has been industrialized, meaning these farms are run like a factory assembly line for both plants and animals. And you've heard some of the stories about people that have run a typical family farm can't make money anymore because of the industrialized farming that's taken over. The industrialized plant farming uses a large amount of highly concentrated chemicals, I emphasize that, chemicals, such as fertilizers, including nitrogen and phosphorus, and large-scale spraying and application of herbicides, pesticides, and fungicides, which in high concentrations are health hazards, and studies have even shown some of them to be carcinogens. For example, due to farming, Iowa has the worst groundwater quality in the country, largely because of nitrate contamination from hog farms and fertilizers. It also has one of the higher cancer rates in the country. I was in a lobbying event in Washington DC three weeks ago, and I met with a couple of folks from Iowa, and this is their major problem, is that their farming is causing pollution and cancer. So in my opinion, you are better off with solar panels as your neighbors than you are with many types of farming. Now, the federal government has been recently against solar energy, but they've not provided any sound reason for their war on solar energy. And they have ignored the huge danger of increasing levels of carbon in the air because of burning coal, oil, and natural gas to produce electricity. This carbon is severely driving climate change. I was going to talk a little bit, but I'm almost out of time. Leaving a good eastern North Carolina for my grandnieces and nephews, things are changing now environmentally. We have to make decisions now so that my grandnieces and nephews will get to enjoy the same eastern North Carolina that I enjoy and love today.
Thank you, sir.
Deborah Wade.
Good afternoon. My name's Deborah Wade. I get nervous and my voice gets shaky. I apologize. I live at 5733 Highway 903 in Aiden, North Carolina. I lived in the St. John Community for 30 years. The first 20 years, I helped farm and worked in the fields on a lot of the land that's in this project. When I first heard about the solar coming, I was against it. I was upset. I was like, my father-in-law used to say they weren't making any more land, you know? And I don't think he would have never wanted, I thought, well, he probably would never want solar to come. But after careful consideration and a lot of praying and soul-searching, and looking at it from different angles and talking to different people, I've talked to the tax people, I've talked to an engineer that cleans up hazardous waste, I've read some of the research articles, I've watched some of the TV programs about what the man was talking about growing fruit and fruit trees and grapevines underneath the solar panels. I've gone by a lot of solar farms and seen that they're well-maintained. To me, they don't look any worse than all the boxes that they're putting in for high-speed internet, all of them down the road everywhere. After all that, I changed my mind. And I only have 26 acres, I mean, I have 28 acres. I was probably the last one to join the project. I've only put 26 in it because I want to keep two acres of the road front for my son to live on. If I felt like it was dangerous, would I want my son to live there, right next to the solar farm? So I put 26 into the option. I believe solar is safe and less invasive than housing. For years, I've received letters from investors all across the country wanting to buy my land for development. Land is being taken up all across the county in big housing developments. Where's all this electricity going to come from? From all these people that are moving into the county. Solar does not cause the flooding like rooftops from houses, paved parking lots. And I believe once the project is completed, I feel like St. John's will be a very quiet and clean community. And I thought this was the best decision to join this project for my children and my grandchildren, which I hope to leave the land to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Emily Exum.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Emily Exum. I have an office in Griffin, 6890 Pitt Street. I live at 2109 St. George Place in Kinston. I support the request for Hexagon Development LOC to rezone our property from rural agriculture to rural agricultural conditional district to allow the operation of a solar farm. The key words for me are rural agriculture. The land cannot be used for anything else. Furthermore, we are leasing, not selling, the land. The lease protects the land for more permanent development. It is my understanding that when the lease is terminated, the land will be returned to its original state at the expense of the solar farm owner, not the landowner. There will be a secured trust to guarantee the funds needed to restore the land. As a landowner, I have certain rights. I can do with my land as I see fit, as long as I don't infringe on the rights of others. My family has owned this land for over 100 years. Our family has always cared for the land and our neighbors. We have never questioned what our neighbors did with their property. When our neighbors recently questioned what we are doing, Hexagon accommodated them by moving the setback on my property 300 feet. I recognize that we are a community. I have been actively involved in the management of the farm and in Johnson-Milton Drainage District for 40 years. The district drains 14,000 acres in this area. Glenda's deceased husband, Al, and other farmers and landowners were and are also active in the management of Johnson-Milton Drainage District. To get funding for draining the district, Al drove me down to Overgrown Ditch Bank so that I could photograph the problem. The ditch bank was in such bad shape that we got stuck in his four-wheel-drive truck that's stuck. Glenda had to come in another truck, bring a chain, and pull us out. We are a community. I am the third generation to manage this farm. I have children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren that I want to inherit this land and have a stable income. I have two sons with me here tonight. At this time, I believe that a solar farm is the best use for this farm. Solar farms are good neighbors and tenants. They are quiet, cemetery might be quieter. They pay on time, and they are invisible once plant screen grows around them. They generate tax revenue which benefits us all. I urge you to approve.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ricky Moore.
Good evening to the board. I'm Ricky Moore, 1717 Blueberry Lane, Griffin, North Carolina. Blueberry Lane is a private drive right off of Whaley Road, which is a dead-end road that connects to Brown Hodges Road. All this stuff's going to be right in my backyard. I'm totally against this thing, I'm telling you. I said something at the rezoning meeting, and I want to say it again. All these wonderful words from these people with the suits and all this stuff. You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. I'm sorry. But that's the honest truth. The community, the people that live there don't want this thing. You've got a handful of landowners that's going to benefit from it, just a handful of landowners that's going to benefit. I worked. I didn't inherit no land, like most of them did. I've worked for the land I got, and it's not much, two and a half acres. But I'd like to leave my two sons something one day. One played football for East Carolina, one played baseball for Pitt Community College. And I'm proud of them. And I'd like to leave them something, you know? And I want to talk real quick about the flooding. How many people here in 1999 during flood, hurricane flood, was out there on their boats, their fishing boats, rescuing these people in my neighborhood? Me. Who else? These are the people that's got these little houses, these little small parcels of land. We were the ones out there helping our neighbors, you know, getting them out of the houses that were flooding and trying to save their stuff. We drug a freezer. That current had gone out, and we drug the freezer behind the boat down the road to get high enough ground to save the people's plumberdill hunt, to save their food in their freezer. We actually let them put the food in our freezer, let them store their clothes in our born-made clothes racks where they could save their clothing, excuse me. Y'all, don't do this to our community. You know, it's all about that mighty dollar. These, you know, it's just not worth it. All the people, I mean, all the houses, all the people. Anyhow, I'm asking y'all to vote no, please. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Marcus Carrichan.
Hey, guys. Marcus Carrichan, Aiden, Griffin area. And speaking of Aiden, Griffin area, there's already a solar panel field between my house and my dad's house, so we do see the impacts that it caused. These other people that are promoting it and everything, you know, Hexagon, everything, they don't live around here. They don't see the damage and everything it's caused. I probably don't care because it's about the dollar. There's a lot of stuff already been said tonight, so I guess I can change everything I was going to say. So just want to say, you know, Pitt County is kind of living up to its name now, the Pitts. It used to be known as a beautiful agricultural county and everything. Now it's getting so overdeveloped and everything, it's not beautiful. Look, I mean, when you see all these solar panels and all this overdevelopment and everything, it's not beautiful no more. And we're not just known as the barbecue capital of the world, we were once known as the tobacco capital of the world with agriculture. Why? Because we have the best soil in our county in the world. And that's where all this overdevelopment is being done to. So what does that mean? Can you eat a solar panel? No. How good is a solar panel versus crops? Last time I read the Bible, it doesn't say anywhere that this world's going to grow any bigger, we get any more farmland or anything to replace. All this land is being taken up. up. We gotta have food to eat. These synthetic hamburgers and stuff are killing us. You want that? No. Anyways, the flooding, like he was mentioning a while ago, I know y'all live around here, y'all watch the news. How many times are we flooding in places now that never even flooded during Floyd? Just last week, even Brook Valley was on there, you know, and all across Grifton, with the solar panels out in Grifton? And a lot of people around here can tell you how much water was across all our roads just recently, and it happens all the time. The field between my house and my dad's house, the solar panels, you know, we, we grew up farming on that. We never see the water come up on out there like it does now. And it rushes into the tributaries, it rushes into the creeks, it rushes into the rivers, and it's so on. So whatever contamination, everything it puts out, it's just, it's a large reflection, not just in the neighborhoods of neighbors battling against each other, it's a large economical thing. These things put off tons of heat, we can see the storms form above these things. Then what happens when the hailstorms hit them or whatever? Yeah, one percent contamination, whatever's true, goes in the ground. All right, you're leasing the land for a while. When that lease is up, and you sign, then what's the ground good for anymore? You can't plant crops on it no more. The land's no good no more, talking about leaving it to somebody else later on, what are you gonna do with it? The land's destroyed. We gotta look at the big picture here, it's just not about a neighborhood. It's about our, it's about our wildlife. And speaking of wildlife, they were talking about to benefit the wildlife. Have you seen the fences around these things? No deer or nothing can get in those things. It doesn't help the wildlife at all. Thank you, sir. Anyways, thanks, guys.
Daniel Cox.
Thank you, sir.
Patty Henderson.
Patty Henderson, eighteen oh five, East Hanrahan Road, Aiden. Property values have been talked about. Unfortunately, there aren't any impact analyses published by certified real estate appraisers other than those funded by solar developers because adjacent property owners and other impacted parties usually don't have the financial resources to conduct a property value impact. I have a letter here dated March first, twenty twenty-one, stating the only impact analyses that were published by certified real estate appraisers were those that were commissioned by developers of solar facilities. Rhode Island research paper referred to in this letter shows values within a tenth of a mile to decrease by seven percent. Those within a mile decreased by five percent. Virginia Tech's researchers recently published work shows that utility-scale solar does impact nearby property values, and that impact shouldn't be ignored. It was published on seven-two, twenty twenty-five. The bill for decommissioning projects will likely be passed on to taxpayers. Insufficient security funds by the developer could result in county responsibility for decommissioning cost. Thirty or forty years from now, those sitting in your seats are going to be scratching their heads, wondering what their predecessors were thinking if you passed this. No plan and cost should ever be approved without a full understanding of the cost to return the land to its original condition. Stripping and compaction removes topsoil, destroys healthy soil organisms, and allows for invasion of exotic plants that choke out native species. Another point, multiple studies show a heat island effect. Solar power plants increase local temperatures. We on Hanrahan Road will be basically on a heat island as we are going to be surrounded. I thought the goal was to decrease climate change. Removing trees and vegetation that absorb CO2 and give us oxygen is not the answer. Trees offer significant stormwater management runoff. Solar panels and the land underneath them are impervious areas, whereas the property has been absorbing water, it no longer will. Additional water would then have to be managed via tools such as retention ponds or drainage infrastructure. Hexagon's already said that they will not, that they will only be using the drainage ditches that are already there, and we all know that turned out, how that turned out during Floyd.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lawrence Malaw.
Hi, thank you. My name's Lawrence Malaw. I maintain a second residence at sixty-four, sixty-one Problemance Lane, Grifton. Also own several other parcels in Pitt County, including parcels adjacent to the solar, solar panel project. And I have that second residence is in the Quinley community, so I enjoyed seeing this gentleman tonight, did not know him. I want to address the concerns raised by those who care deeply about preserving farmland. I'm here tonight to express my strong support for this project. While these opinions are respected, it's important to recognize that this solar project presents a rare opportunity, an opportunity to take a positive forward-thinking step that aligns with the values and spirit of the envisioned Pitt County twenty forty-five comprehensive land use plan. Approving this project is not just about permitting new development, it is about making a responsible decision for our land, our economy, and our future. It offers a sustainable model that balances agricultural preservation with the realities of the twenty-first century. By approving this project, you're not only making a smart economic choice, but also fulfilling a moral responsibility to guide Pitt County toward a future that balances growth, sustainability, and the protection of our natural resources. Here are the key reasons this project should move forward. First, this land has been farmed continuously for decades. The solar project offers a long-term rest from chemicals and plowing, allowing the land to recover and potentially return to more sustainable farming. Second, this is not a permanent loss of farmland. It's a twenty-to-thirty-year conservation strategy by the landowners that keeps the land intact and kept within the generational families. When the lease ends, this land can be returned to agriculture in better condition, healthier, more resilient, and more productive. Third, the project generates clean energy. It brings new tax revenues, supports local landowners, and reduces development pressure from urban sprawl. We heard here tonight several people want to put their big houses in the middle of farmland, but they don't want a solar farm there. Fourth, the project is required to follow state regulations, including decommissioning plans, enough said there. Finally, while change can be intimidating, the project is grounded in facts and sustainability, which I would ask that you pay attention to, the facts, offering a responsible solution for land use. The twenty forty-five plan emphasizes balancing growth with agricultural preservation. This project embodies that balance. It supports the local economy, it respects our rural character, and it allows farmland to recover while producing clean energy. So I urge you to approve this project tonight in support of a future that is sustainable, economically viable, and environmentally responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Have no one else signed up to speak?
All right, we shall close the public hearing. Discussion from the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments.
Please.
I am in favor of this project. I have talked with a number of folks that own the land in this project that are contracted with Hexagon, and I know from my conversations with them that they have fought this thing through carefully. They have made what they thought think are the best decisions for their farmland and for the future of their farmland. I've also talked with some folks, because there've been, there've been solar farms in Pitt County for at least ten or more years, and I know some of those folks, and I've talked to them. And they have nothing but good things to say for the benefits that they've received from having these solar farms on their property. I also took the opportunity to go and look at those older solar farms and look at the property values that's listed on our GIS system, and every residential property, some of them bordering those solar farms, have increased in property value. So I, I just don't see where the, at least if, from what our tax office says, the value of those properties have gone up since those solar farms were in place. I think Hexagon has gone be, above and beyond on setting, doing the setbacks and the buffers to try to appease the local folks. And I appreciate that, but I think they, you know, they've really gone beyond the calling here. This is not a permanent change to the land, and the land can be reclaimed at some point in the future and put back into farming. Now, I grew up on, well, I didn't grow up on the farm, but I, when I was young, I was working on a farm from the time I was young right on up till the time I came to work in Pitt County. So I know about the hazards and the environmental impacts of farming, and I, I'm confident that solar panels will have less impact on the environment and on the wildlife than actual farming does. Ninety percent of the materials are recyclable, and the one thing that hasn't been discussed very much about the solar panels is civil preparedness. I asked the question of Hexagon, can these solar panels, in the event of a cataclysmic event? It could be anything, a major hurricane, an earthquake, fire, even an act of war. You all know that there's no energy produced in Pitt County until, except for what few solar panels we currently have. We're totally dependent on an energy grid that could be knocked out and put us in the dark for months or years, because they don't build nuclear plants or hydroelectric plants, they don't just build them in a few years, takes a lot of development to get them up. The point is, I asked the question, would these solar panels help power up Pitt County in the event we were severed from the source of our electricity? And the answer is yes. And, and the point is, from a civil preparedness standpoint, which is, like I say, is not being discussed, but the potential is there. We've heard for years about how our power grids are fragile, they're subject to cyber attacks, that anything could happen beyond our control. And the future of Pitt County under those circumstances, in my mind, could be, these solar panels could be our salvation. So in, in regards to that, I'm very much in favor of this project, and I, I support the local farmers who are trying to save their land and provide it to their next generations. And I'll be glad to make a motion when you're ready.
In due time, Commissioner Nunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really appreciated all the comments this evening and coming into and reading over the materials. I had a lot of questions and really wanted a chance, an opportunity to hear from all the presenters. Some of my concerns, all of which have been spoken on tonight, on both sides, but primary concern is the idea about decommissioning. What happens when or if the vendor ceases operations? And we've heard tonight, and in research prior to tonight, was, was able to see in the materials that, and research in the state of North Carolina, that we, we've done something in the state that, that vendors are required to have viable plans in place. And in viewing Hexagon's plan, I think that they have, they've been, they've been very good about showing the due diligence and having a robust plan in place that is now a requirement. So it's a concern, I think it's a concern that a lot of people had. I had on this board when we've approved former solar farms, this idea, is it a terminal crop on a, on a, on a plot of land? I think that the law that was passed in two thousand twenty-three says, no, it doesn't have to be terminal. In fact, the vendor's required to have the backing to do it. And so that concern was, was put to rest. My other concern is the, the relatively recent use of solar in our country has been really homogeneous and really without a lot of thought in regard to what's underneath the panels. And I was really heartened by this idea that the land that was under the panels is gonna be used and planted with native species to help pollinators, which, which, which in fact does help agriculture in, in our region. As we, as we may or may not know, if our agricultural crops that, that produce food and that produce industry in our county, they're relying on pollinators, and pollinators are under constant, constant stress. And so I like to hear that. I like that the developers doing something that more and more countries and more and more areas that are developing solar are saying, hey, we don't have to just look at the panels, we can look at what's underneath. I like that the project has been responsive to the community. Development can be done poorly, and, and in this case, I think that there's, is an example of the due diligence has been done, there's been feedback, and there's been concession, I want to even say concessions, proper development benefits everybody. And in a growing county, it's gonna happen. And, and you combine that with the need of, and, and the right of the property owners being able to utilize their land and benefit from it, coupled with the public's interest in, in having projects that are, that are, that are productive and not, not offensive, I think that this, this project is well on its way to being that type of project, and I like that. And I like that it preserves farmland. Pitt County is a rural agricultural county, a big part of the envisioned, the last speaker brought it up, but we don't get to reclaim land when it's developed into residences. That is a terminal crop. I like the idea of Pitt County fifty years from now being able to have land the crops are planted in. And, and I do think that plans like this, that are well thought out, that are robust, that are not kind of fly-by-night operations, I think it presents us an opportunity to preserve that in the light of real market strain. There's a real market strain on our farmland, that it be converted into rooftops. And that's not always a bad thing, but I think that it, especially in areas that are, that are preserved up to this date, in large part, I think it's important that when we've got opportunities to do that and also have the land be productive for those landowners, you know, we, we, we allow that type of development. So for that, for those reasons, I would be in support of the project.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you very much. First and foremost, I just want to say to everyone in the room that came out tonight, thank you. Thank you for your perspective. I hear all of you, and I understand all of you, and this is really tough being up here because from a property rights perspective, I understand a lot of you, and then from a community and risk perspective, I hear all of you. The, the petition was really important to me tonight, whoever brought that up. So is that something that we can all see to be passed around? I would like to know if those are residents in the area or where those residents actually are coming from. Also, am I able to ask Ally a couple questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this. So, hi, Ally. Thank you so much for the presentation from Hexagon. I think you guys did really well. I think it was very well-prepared, and I do agree with my fellow commissioners that left for little questions, however, I still do have just a couple, if you don't mind. My first one is the subsidies and the tax exemptions, that this is basically fed from. Is that a guarantee, given all of the federal cuts that we are seeing, that, that these landowners will in fact still receive their annual payments, so to speak, indefinitely throughout the contract?
Yes. So the, the tax subsidies and the tax incentives that have been given to solar and most of the energy in this country, as people mentioned, that is going away in twenty twenty-six, there's a slight ramp, twenty twenty-six, and then again in twenty twenty-seven. This project is not dependent on that in any way, and actually is not, has no chance of meeting those, those deadlines. So we, we are not going into this with any hopes that we will get any sort of subsidy for this project. So we would have to have started construction like now, essentially, to qualify for those, and we're still a long ways off. I mean, even if you all pass this tonight, we're still a couple years off from construction. So on that note, the, the, because the project is not dependent So on that note, the, because the project is not dependent on those, we're moving forward. We, you know, Duke still wants renewable projects. North Carolina still needs energy no matter where it's coming from. And so this is still a viable economic, a project from an economic standpoint. And then as for the landowners, their lease payments are annual. And those have to be paid upfront each year. So if the, if Duke, the ultimate owner-operator of the project, is in default, that's when it would trigger the decommissioning requirements. If they're not paying their lease payments, then they're in default of the contract. The contract is, you know, breached, I guess you would say. And then the project would have to be decommissioned and cleaned up. So it's Duke Energy paying the landowners, not my company. So if we were to fold or something were to happen to Hexagon, this is, this is a Duke, this is the landowners and Duke.
So Duke's the project owner? And what is the final cost of decommissioning? I know I had asked early in this process, but I was just curious if we had a number on that yet?
It's in the decommissioning report that's in the application. And I wrote it down for the planning hearing and I didn't have to say it. And now I can't tell you the, the number off the top of my head.
Okay, so it is in there?
We did do a decommissioning report. That is, I think somebody brought up what happens if, if it isn't paid for. That, the decommissioning is in the form of a bond that is put aside upfront before construction even begins. And that bond amount is renewed every five years.
So is that bond tied to inflation or a rising disposal, disposal cost?
It's renewed every five years. So they, so that five-year renewal, they have to recalculate the total bond every five years.
So it's not fixed?
No, it's not fixed, exactly. Yeah, so I guess you could say it would be tied to inflation because that's what they'll take into account every five years.
Okay, okay. And then the relationship with Boviet Solar locally. Is there a contract in place that confirms that we will in fact receive the solar panels from them? And if so, for how long?
Unfortunately, that will be, that is not our decision. That is Duke's decision. But we have specced the project using Boviet panels. We've met with the Boviet team. We are doing everything we can possibly do to use the Boviet panels. It's in the application that we're submitting to Duke. We're, we're touting that as a major win for the project, a win for the community, a win for Duke. So it seems like there's a very, you know, it would seem odd to me that Duke would not use local panels, but ultimately it is their decision.
Okay, and then I'll wrap it up. I, I could ask questions all night long, but I'll stick, but this one is my last as it just sticks out, hearing about autoimmune and some, some, you know, health-related concerns. So we know that the, that the panels have the C D T E toxic chemicals in them. And in large amounts, that can be harmful. However, I can't understand, is that per panel that they're, they have small amounts? Is it, in, in my responses of asking regarding the toxicity of those? Is that just per panel or are we referring to the entire project that it's a small amount?
Sure. I mean, each study looks at it differently, but the cumulative effect of large-scale solar projects is minimal on health. So, and on, so there's a very minimal amount of the cadmium telluride, which is different than just cadmium on its own. It is far less toxic. And so the thing about that is it would have to somehow get into the environment for it to be harmful. So first of all, it's in negligible, negligible amounts. And then on top of that, it would have to get into the environment somehow, which as they're built is not possible. The, there have been studies that pulverize panels, literally pulverize the panels into dust and then pour water through to see what chemicals leach out. And even then, it was very trace amounts. So it would require something pretty wild to happen for those chemicals to escape the panels. It's, the, there's tempered glass over the panels, like a car windshield. So just as your car windshield doesn't shatter when a rock hits it, the panels don't shatter when hail hits it or, you know, a tree falls on it.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Ask one more question. Who gets the power? Where is it going to and all that stuff? Who's benefited from it? When we can call this guy, body, we're going to.
Marcus, I'm sorry, sir, you're not in order.
Okay, we just would like to know where power's going.
Sir, if, uh, security, if he don't quiet down, please, we're moving from the audience. Commissioner McGloughorn?
Thank you, Commissioner. First of all, I would like to just come here and give you a respect. Concerning, concerning this matter, it certainly is important to all of you and I appreciate just listening. Now, I've been a commissioner for quite some time and I listen intensively and intentionally at all of you. The planning board has, has, has done some extensive study on this matter. And as you heard, it was voted on, from the planning board, that they almost voted unanimously to support this. Now, the, the part that I liked was by Ms. Krantz and her organization has gone beyond the call of duty to try to satisfy the concerns of the residents. And certainly, I was very appreciative to what they've done. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I certainly think that this was in line in keeping the progress of this county and being the leader in the state and the best in the East. And we want to continue to grow in that matter. So I certainly, Mr. Chairman, would support this, this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a tough one. Cause as Commissioner Brown said, you know, I, I am a firm believer in the right to the property owner to do as they please with their property, as long as it's not illegal. But I've also been a huge advocate for doing what the majority of the people want. I have had, I've had a few people reach out to me for, for this project, but the majority of the people that have reached out to me have been against this project. And one thing that was said tonight that really kind of struck away with me and it's probably because of my, my own cancer diagnosis this year. There was a couple out there that said that they had a little boy that was diagnosed with cancer when he was two. And they were talking about the radiation coming from the solar panels. And I do know that radiation can cause cancer. That was a side effect that I was told it can cause secondary cancers for me. So with all that being said, this is one, I have lost sleep over this. I have stressed about this. I broke out in hives thinking about this. So this is a tough one for me. I do appreciate everybody coming tonight and speaking and sharing your, your thoughts and your concerns on it. And I would like to see the petition also. I just would like to also glance at that. Cause I have been writing down who is for, who is against, and also who lives in the area. So I would like to see that petition, please.
Is that only copy of the petition we have? Okay. Is there any other commissioner that'd like to see that? Any other questions or discussion? Vice Chair? Got you.
I'm a bit perplexed about this situation. I believe in agriculture, farmer's daughter. I lost everything my parents had with Floyd. But at some point, I have gone with solar. But tonight, I have to be with the farmers. Something was said that really struck me. So that's where my vote will go. We can't give up everything. And I do know that some of the farm that my parents had, we didn't have a choice with selling. Intimate domain took it. And I know how my mother felt with that. So this time, I'm voting with the farmers. And the family. It hurts when you see your children suffer. And the couple of articles that I looked at from previous times and what some people said in other countries about it in reputable journals, I like to say that the research hasn't been done long enough to know how solar panels impact human beings. Not that I dislike animals. I do love them. I enjoy them. But I love humans more. So I have gone with solar panels, but I'm going with the farmers this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Much pleasure to vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we accept the planning board's recommendation. The consistency statement that's presented in the, on page fifty-eight.
You have a motion?
And I'll, I'll second, and I'd ask if the commissioner could accept a friendly amendment to the motion that the additional conditions that were agreed upon by the vendor, developer, and the property owners that discussed, that they be included in the conditions that we would approve.
Is that accepted?
Should it pass? Is that acceptable?
Okay, aren't they already included?
They are, they are included. However, I think there was an additional condition about five-hundred-foot setbacks along the Whaley Road.
That's right.
Property. That's the only other additional comment I heard tonight.
Certainly, Hexagon has already agreed to that, so that would be a proper thing to add in.
So that would just be my friendly amendment to your motion.
That's, one, that's good. That's as far as from, between residences, is that right?
Correct. So there's a three-hundred-foot separation between residential property. Hexagon Alley indicated that they had conceded five-hundred-feet separation along Whaley Road.
And also, you want to do this all in one motion?
If you could, please.
Okay, I thought we used, we were doing them as.
Well, he added a friendly, so.
Okay. So, so the, the consistency statement and then approve the request to rezone as stated in the, in the agenda. So there's two things that need to be voted on, is that correct?
Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
And the rezoning in one motion? Okay, very good. And just to clarify, this, this motion is supporting the farmers and supporting the solar project at the same time. Because I think the, what we're doing here is giving these farmers the chance to have a steady income so that they can save their farms for their families.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion passes. All right, moving on to items for report, Mr. Russell Hill.
Good evening, Chairman Holloman, Commissioners, and Manager Gallagher. This evening, I present to you the July tax collection report. The fiscal year combined tax collection rate through July thirty-first for real and personal property was nine.
Uh, if y'all will please leave in an orderly and quiet fashion, please. Thank you. Carry on.
The, for real and personal property, the tax collection rate was nine-point-one-nine percent. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was six-point-six-eight percent. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation to approve the July tax collection report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Second, please vote. There you, there you go. All right, Mr. Sam Kroom. Now, before you start, is this officially your last report to us?
This is.
All right. I hate to hear that, but I do understand.
Well, thank you. Well, good evening, Chairman Holloman, members of the board, Madam Manager. It's good to be with you tonight. I bring you the July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five financial report for the General Fund, Solid Waste Fund, and EMS Fund. We're one month into the fiscal year at this point, or eight-point-three percent of the year. For the General Fund, we have collected five-point-seven percent of anticipated revenues and spent six-point-nine percent of budgeted expenditures. Solid Waste, we have collected eight-point-three percent and spent four-point-three percent. EMS, we have collected eight-point-three percent and spent thirteen-point-six percent. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, it's my recommendation for a motion to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
You got a motion? You have a second? Second, please vote. All right, Madam Manager, you up?
Yes, for your manager's report this evening, I want to remind you of your next.
Hold on. All right, thank you. Carry on.
Want to remind you of your next meeting date, September fifteenth at six P M. You only have one meeting in the month of September. And then refer to two meetings per month, beginning October sixth at six P M, both in this room. Reminder that offices are closed September first in observance of Labor Day. Item C is to remind you that this week, we are hosting the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference from the twentieth to the twenty-third, beginning with a Board of Directors Dinner on Wednesday and continuing through the President's Reception Saturday evening. We look forward to hosting that event here in Pitt County. And then item D, to make the board aware for those who may not have heard, that we had a passing of another current employee since we last met, Tim Hines, within the Pitt County Detention Center. And wanted to share that as you all keep his family and the Detention Center family in your thoughts and prayers. As I was reviewing this agenda, Commissioner Manning also reminded me that a retired Sheriff's Office employee, Julia Seymour, also recently passed. And so we continue to think of her family as well.
Thank you.
That's all I have in my report, Mr. Chairman, unless you'll allow me to say that we continue to track Hurricane Erin and are working with emergency management to keep staff and the public updated on any developments. At this time, the inland impact is minimal, but we'll continue to monitor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to items to consent, number one through fifteen. Got a motion and a second, please vote. Now, moving on to items for discussion. Does anybody vote? That's a good thing. All right, items for discussion, number one, contract with J K F Architecture, Mr. Corley, if you will, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad to bring to you the contract for design of our new county administration building. We sat down and negotiated with J K F Architecture. Actually got the percentage of the price down for the county, saved some money. So as you'll see in your agenda, the total price is based on a percentage. This also includes not only administration building design, but also design for the PATS move to the Technology Enterprise Center, also to try to help with funds for the project. Overall, we're going to try to do that project in-house after the design is complete. So John has presented a full scope of services for that project. However, we're going to let him design it and then probably manage that project in-house with bidding and construction administration. Obviously, the admin project will be full service from beginning to end of that project. The total construction, based on the total construction costs of the project, the fee is anticipated to be three million, four-hundred-twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars. And again, that's for site plan work, the M E P design, all the preliminary survey throughout the entire project and management of the project as well. So anticipating that's about a two-to-three-year period of construction. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Where is this building being planned to be built?
As discussed previously in our meetings at the Pitt County Office Park.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure. Thank you. You need a motion or something?
Hold on a minute, if you will, please. Any further discussion? All right, y'all do your thing.
Motion.
Motion. Motion and a second. All right, please vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Motion and a second. All right, please vote. Thank you, second. Moving on to item number eleven, items for decision. Appointment to the Nursing Home Adult Care Community, Madam Manager.
Yes, it has been suggested that this board nominate Yolanda Hines to the Pitt County Nursing Home Adult Care Community Advisory Committee. There's a letter in support on page two forty-three in your packet.
You got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, please vote. Moving on to reappointment to the Wonderful Planning and Zoning Board, Madam Manager, that's you also.
Yes, it is being recommended that Henry Hostetler be reappointed to the Wonderful Planning and Zoning Board. He is in the seat designated for an ETJ member.
Motion and a second, please vote. Going to Commissioner Comments, we'll start to my right. Commissioner Brown.
Thank you so much. I would just wanted to say to all the children who are about to start school and teachers, as we move into the new school year, for everyone to have a safe, healthy, and happy year and successful year. Also, again, thank you to everyone that came out tonight and voiced your opinion. We appreciate it very much. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith has nine.
I quickly want to ask the.
Page two button, please. Thank you.
I want to quickly ask the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, if they would consider having, that we would start looking at how we can build a different climate for our economic development and have our cultural, creative economy. I've spoken with the manager about it, that we can start looking at it. October may be a little quick for it, and I also spoke with Jennifer. So I'd like to ask the board if they would consider Jennifer and Kelly Andrews to look at a creative economy for Pitt County and come up with a program, a panel side, that we can keep our young adults in Pitt County and that we, those who are not going off to college or something. So if we will please support me in that and make that a support effort that they can start looking at, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Manning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to commend Beth Sheba Smith. I helped hire her way back, and it's so nice that I did, I did a.
Had a good day of work that day, back then. And also, Mr. Corley spoke to my Kiwanis Club today and did a fine job promoting county business. So thank you very much.
Commissioner McGlaughorn?
Just want to inform the board that at our Board of Health meeting, the board was, had a training on the Board of Health role in public health emergency preparedness. We had training on that at our Board of Health meeting, so we.
Thank you, Commissioner Manning.
No comments.
And last but not least, Commissioner White.
I have a few comments, Mr. Chairman.
Take your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. As all of you know, that this year has been full of some personal health struggles for me. When you are told that you have cancer, it really makes you reprioritize and rethink about things. I'm being seen by a lot of doctors, even though I am cancer-free, I'm being seen by a lot of doctors, and my risk of recurrence is a little bit higher than what everybody is comfortable with because of my age. So I've been encouraged to cut out, among many things, seed oils, sugar, and stress. As my fellow board members can tell you, this job is very stressful. It does not end when we leave here, whether it's six-thirty or seven on a Monday night, or eight-thirty, nine o'clock, or even later. There's phone calls, emails, and just a lot of stress that goes along with it. So after much consideration and a lot of thought and prayer, I have decided to resign my seat effective next month. I do have a few things that I want to say. My last meeting over here in this corner, Janice, you have been absolutely wonderful. In my eight and a half years on the board, I have told people that the, one of the best things that I have been a part of is hiring you as county manager. I remember when I started out, I sat where Rochelle is, and you sat where Matt is, and I would not speak without leaning over and asking you, does this sound stupid? So you were wonderful. Pitt County is very, very blessed to have you. And even though it was a unanimous decision to hire you as county manager, I made the motion, so I will take credit for that. Matt, it has also been a true pleasure to work with you, and I have had, I'm proud to have been a part of hiring you. Also, I've asked you for legal advice five minutes before a meeting, and you have been able to quote statutes and ordinances confidently and accurately. And Pitt County is also very lucky to have you. To all the other staff in here, at some point or another, I have called, texted, or emailed you, some of you multiple times, and with a question or a problem that has been shared with me, and you have immediately responded with answers and solutions. And because of y'all, y'all have made me look good the past eight and a half years. So y'all are a true asset to Pitt County, and I thank you for everything that you have done for the county. To my fellow board members, it really has been an honor to serve with you all. I consider you all friends, and even though we may not always vote the same, I do believe that we all feel like what we are doing in our heart is right, and it's for the best, is for the best of the community. And it has really been an honor to serve with you all. And I know it's a thankless job, and I promise me, unless y'all raise my taxes, I will not call you to complain. Lastly, to everybody out there listening in District Six and all over Pitt County, it has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve every one of you for the past eight and a half years, and I appreciate your trust and your confidence in me to be an advocate for you and to be your voice. District Six deserves somebody who can give one hundred and ten percent, and I'm just not able to do that anymore. So I will work with the Republican Party to ensure that they have a nomination in place by the next meeting in September. My resignation will be effective next month. So that is all I have to say. And, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I offer my very last motion on this board, a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
I want, I want to offer a motion. Can you wait? You can do that.
Sure.
But I'd like to offer a motion that Jennifer, Jennifer Lanier Coward and Kelly Andrews work on a panel discussion as to how we can proceed with creative arts program and panel discussion, how we can gain, our economy can grow and gain from it.
Do we need a motion for that?
If the board intends to approve it or direct it.
Okay. You have a motion before the motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. What?
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I apologize. So this is a motion to simply look into the process, is that correct? May I ask, our county manager, your thoughts on that? Is it appropriate to?
Yeah, so I think with sufficient time and planning, it can be something that is developed. I would have hesitation about the, an October date that has been set and a lineup of speakers that we haven't been able to get into place by that period of time. So I would have hesitation about that. I do think, as I understand the request, it's really in line with economic development. So I would want to bring in Kelly Andrews, although Cultural Arts and Recreation includes cultural arts in its title, from what I understand. I think we would need a sufficient, in order for this to be done well, it would need funds associated with it. It would need a budget, and it would need time and planning to make it be successful. I would hate to rush through, and, and an ability for me to better understand the outcomes and objectives that are desired. And so.
So would you need a motion, or would you just need to, to, for you to look into it and bring it back with some kind of information?
Such as numbers attached to it?
Budget and all that, and some input from Kelly and Jennifer.
I could bring something back.
Yeah.
And maybe Pitt County Arts Council to emerge, who currently reports to this board on that very topic.
Yes.
Yes. So, so let's not have a motion.
Well, you have, you have one, so.
Oh.
Do we have a second? Okay. Motion dies for lack of a second. Now, if you want to say these famous last words.
I will gladly make the motion to adjourn and go home tonight.
Hold on, before we have a second, you will come back in September for us to sing your accolades. If not, we can just leave this mo, this meeting open. Until then, it don't bother me.
I mean, the resolution that y'all helped me pass that went to NACO was passed by every county in all fifty states. I mean, that was a pretty, pretty good grand finale exit.
That's probably going to be one of them wear hazards that she likes to say. So.
But.
I'll even put on a tie.
If you'll wear a tie, Mr. Chairman, I will come back to the meeting in September.
You have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Please vote. Good night.